You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
The Monday, April 9th Fayetteville City Council meeting to order. This time we will have the invocation. Get some of my notes together. This time we would ask that Pastor Reginald Johnston, my father's house, would come to the podium. Ask it all would rise for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pastor Johnston?
Yes. Give an honor to God, to the mayor, the city council, all the citizens and friends. Let us pray. Father God, I come to you in prayer in the name of Jesus, thanking you for this day that you have made. Lord, we are glad and we rejoice in it. We thank you for this beautiful city of Fayetteville that you have blessed us with. We thank you for these city officials, the mayor and the city council. Bless them, Lord God. I pray that you will bless them to lead with wisdom, bless them to walk in integrity, bless them, Lord God, to judge with equity, bless them to show compassion with mercy, and bless them to be the model citizens that we long to see in this city. I pray that you will bless them as every matter that comes before them. Let nothing be a surprise, Lord. May they weigh out the matters. Thank you, Father God, for them and thank you for all the officials in this city. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Johnston, tell us a little bit about your ministry.
Well, I am the pastor of my father's house Christian church right here in Fayetteville, North Carolina. And I'm so grateful to be in the city. And one of the joys of our ministry is what's called capital, our capital ministry. And just like the name of our church, my father's house, Jesus said in my father's house are many mansions. And we have just ten mansions, ten apartments on Old Shaw Road. And we use these apartments to help men and women to transition after they get out of prison, to help them get back into society. And that's one of the joys of our ministry and we love that and thank God that we're able to contribute to the city.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for what you do for the citizens. Thank you for your ministry.
Thank you.
Counsel, at this time we will have announcements. Think that I would defer to Councilmember Jensen and Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would like to announce that on Saturday, April 14th, 12th, sorry. Is it 14th or the 12th? 14th. We are going to have our ribbon cutting for our splash pad and our buddy ball, buddy ball, baseball for our new field, inclusion field is what we call it. So we are very excited about that. It will be at nine o'clock at the Massey Hill Rec Center and we hope that we can get people to come out and celebrate with us. Thank you. And Myers Park will be the weekend after. The Myers Park splash pad will be, ribbon cutting will be the week after. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Counsel, and member Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to promote the, join the team, keep Fayetteville clean. And the website is FayettevilleBeautiful.com. And it's going to be an annual, it's our annual citywide cleanup Saturday, April 21st. So we want to try to promote that as much as we can. We had over 650 volunteers last year. And we're going to give you an orange bag and some gloves and a bottle of water. So come join us. And this Saturday, Honeycut Fields at the Kiwanis Park is having their opening day. So there'll be about 450 on Saturday at a little before 10:00 a.m. So if you're out riding around and want to see a lot of folks having a fun time, go to the Kiwanis Park at the Honeycut Fields. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Just like to remind everyone, we don't have the particulars, but I know this weekend they have the As One Prayer Walk. And that is on the city website, The Coffee with the Mayor. Mr. Jeremy Wright and his team are doing the As One Prayer Walk, the annual walk. Not for sure the particulars of the time. Councilmember Wright is researching that, but just be mindful of that. So a lot of activity this weekend. Did we catch all the announcements? Councilmember Jensen?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Everybody has this on their diocese. I wanted to talk about the Parkinson's Disease Support Group and to let our listeners know that it meets at 10:00 a.m. every second Saturday of the month at the Kiwanis Rec Center. And if you have, if you need any information on that, it's 910-518-0045. Would you let me introduce?
Absolutely.
Okay. And my next announcement is Ms. Rebecca Mitchell from the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council is here with us again. She is our president of our county and city youth council and the state council. And they were up in Raleigh this weekend, so I'm sure she's going to tell us a little bit about that.
Yes, we recently had-
71st. Sorry, at 71st.
I'm going to see you at 71st. So we recently had some FCYC youth delegates attend the youth legislative assembly in Raleigh, North Carolina, where two of our members were recognized. Casey Lee was recognized for outstanding leadership as co-chair. And Nicole Washington received the most outstanding delegate of the weekend. So that was exciting. We had a very successful event. And also this Saturday, April 14th, we are participating in a teen cleanup day. So it's followed by the annual citywide cleanup on the 21st. And it's just a bunch of teens are going to come out and clean up neighborhoods around Fayetteville.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome again. Councilmember Wright, you have the specifics?
Yes, I have. Mayor, I have the particulars on the As One Prayer Walk. Those dates are April 13th and 14th. This weekend coming, on Friday, there's a next level Women's Encounter Luncheon on the 13th at Skyview on Hay Street. And you can participate in that. The As One Prayer Walk is on the 14th and it'll be downtown here starting at the festival park. And you want to be there around eight o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, as we prepare for presentation of proclamations, ask Mr. Steve and Ms. Nina Carter if you can meet me at the podium. Councilmember Art?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor is heading down, or I'll go ahead and start the proclamation. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the, in the United States. And whereas there is inadequate data on the incidence and prevalence of Parkinson's disease, but is estimated to affect 500,000 to 1.5 million people in the U.S. And the prevalence will more than double by the year 2040. And whereas it is estimated that the economic burden of Parkinson's disease is at least $14.4 billion annually, including indirect costs to patients and family members of $6.3 billion. And whereas research suggests the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause and progression of the, of the disease is still unknown. And whereas there is no objective test for Parkinson's disease and there is no cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease. And whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease vary from person to person and can include tremors, slowness of movement and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders such as depression and anxiety, constipation, skin problems, and sleep difficulties. And whereas volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's disease and their families. And whereas the Parkinson's Disease Support Group of Fayetteville, North Carolina participates in research, education, and community support. More of these services are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access to quality care to those living with the disease today. Now therefore, I'm Mitch Colvin, mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the city council, to hereby honorably proclaim the month of April in the year 2018 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Fayetteville and encourage the citizens of Fayetteville to learn more about Parkinson's disease and the benefits that can be gained through education, exercise, and engagement provided by the Parkinson Support Group of Fayetteville. Sign. The Honorable Mitch Colvin, Mayor, City of Fayetteville.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to have the fair housing board members meet the mayor at the podium. And then we're going to have Councilmember Jensen read a proclamation.
Whereas the city of Fayetteville believes in human dignity and the worth of each individual person regardless of any difference, including but not limited to race, religion, creed, gender, gender identity, sexuality, marital status, national origin, or persons who are differently, are differently. And whereas the city of Fayetteville promotes inclusion while actively maintaining and acceptance of the difference and mutual respect among all individuals, groups, and persons of very economic status. And whereas the city of Fayetteville wishes to express its gratitude to the Fayetteville Fair Housing Board and its service to our residents in promoting positive human relations, enhancing awareness, acceptance, understanding, fairness, and supporting equal access and opportunities for all. And whereas the city of Fayetteville joins with the county of Cumberland and the state of North Carolina in the annual observance of May as National Fair Housing Month and encourages all residents to take time to reflect on the importance of equal opportunity and housing choice. And whereas the city of Fayetteville celebrates the 50th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act in 1968. Now therefore, I'm Mitch Colvin, mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the city council, do hereby honorably proclaim April in the year of 2018 to be National Fair Housing Month. In the city moving forward, opening doors, and doing new things in an effort to achieve excellence for our residents. In witness whereof, I here undo, set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this fifth day of April 2018.
And our final proclamation tonight is the Public Safety Telecommunicators Week proclamation. We'd like to have Ms. Lisa Reed, Public Safety Communications Manager, come to the podium.
Okay, and the proclamation reads, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to protection of life and the preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone to Fayetteville Police Fire Communication Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the Fayetteville City Council, do hereby proclaim April 8th through the 14th, 2018, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. It is witness thereof, and I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this 4th of April in the year of 2018.
All right. Thank you so much. Congratulations again to all of the, those that received the proclamations. Great work. Item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. Mayor Protem Moan?
Yes, counsel, I move to approve the agenda with the following additions. Item 5.1A, review and approval of Ethics Commission's request for advisory opinion. And B, removal, review and approval of city council request for Councilmember Williams' resignation. And then I'd like to renumber current item 9.02 to 9.03 and add a new item, 9.02, which is to reaffirm council's previous votes regarding Project Home Run taken after December 4th, 2017 by Councilmember Williams requesting recusal. And in there, there's five items that we will get to when we get to the agenda item.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem Moan. That is a motion to make-
If I may offer a friendly amendment, I think we have to also add an item for Councilmember Williams to recuse himself again this evening.
I think that was coming at item under the, after the public hearings.
Right. Item after the public-
It's coming in the eighth series.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we didn't miss that.
Thank you. All right. There's a motion by Mayor Protem to make the following amendments to the agenda tonight. Is there a second?
Second, yes, Mayor.
Second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel, ask for your vote.
I got the next two motions.
Madam clerk, that is 9-0 with the exception of Mr. Williams. All right. Motion carries. Item 6.0 is the-
5.1.
Oh, apologies. Item 5.1A, the advisory opinion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you allow, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Ethics Commission request for an advisory opinion that we talked about during our work session.
All right. Item 5.1A for the general public is the review and approval of the council's consensus to recommend the Ethics Commission to review the matters pertaining to the recusal Councilmember Williams. So that was a motion by Mayor Protem Moan. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, I think I made that motion in the work session. The purpose of the motion was to investigate the matter of the ethics violation by the Ethics Commission, not just the recusal vote.
Okay. Thank you for that. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about having a third party look at this matter outside of house. Is that still something that we're talking about or that agenda on the last agenda we talked about?
Well, on this, on this motion, this was just a review of the Ethics Commission request. And I was going to make my statement pertaining to that during the discussion phase, which is I feel that we need a full review. I'm not sure that I have a lot of confidence in our Ethics Commission, but I'm not certain that they have the manpower nor the resources to fully look at the scope of what happened, I think. But however, I am compliant to the council's request, which was to forward the matter to the Ethics Commission. There was some language that the city manager had written that I think that, Mr. Manager, will that be distributed prior to just the, the scope of what we're asking them to do so that it will encompass what Councilmember Art articulated in his discussion?
Mayor and counsel, I'll be happy to read it. We don't have copies for all the media tonight, members of the media. But it is, as you mentioned, a request for an advisory opinion. And it reads as follows. "We, the members of the city council, request an advisory opinion advising whether Mr. Tyrone Williams, District 2, Fayetteville City Council, has a conflict of interest with Prince Charles Holdings LLC. Mr. Williams met with members of Prince Charles Holdings LLC on December 21st, 2017, thereby possibly creating a conflict of interest. Thereafter, on March 26th, 2018, he recused himself from voting on matters related to his conflict of interest. The city council is requesting an advisory opinion as to whether he has a conflict of interest and whether his previous votes on matters regarding the Prince Charles Holdings LLC project violated the city of Fayetteville conflict of interest ordinance."
Okay. Thank you. And you provide a copy for the press as well as to the council for that. So counsel, there's a motion with discussions, a motion with the discussion phase and a second to refer this to the Ethics Commission. Is there any further discussion on this motion? If not, we'll look to you for action. Madam clerk, that motion carries 9 to 1. Those voting in favor of referring to the Ethics Commission, Councilmember Crisp, Art, Wright, Colvin, Moan, Jensen, Hare, Dawkins, Waddell. Those voting opposed, Councilmember Williams. All right. Item 5.1B is the review and approval of the city council request to, for Councilmember Williams' resignation. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mayor and counsel, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the city council member request for Councilmember Williams' resignation. And I will read that request since the signatures were just finalized before the meeting. The request is dated 9 April 2018. It says, "To Councilmember Tyrone A. Williams, subject, request for resignation. Due to your actions related to the Prince Charles Holdings PCH, the below members of the Fayetteville City Council, represented by their signature, request your immediate resignation as city council member, District 2, Fayetteville, North Carolina." And it was signed by the other nine members of council.
All right. Mayor Protem, was that a form of motion?
That was a motion.
All right. Is there a second on the motion?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Waddell. As we have talked previously, as we enter into the discussion phase of this, we have agreed that we will have a round of discussion consistent with any other motion, that we will be respectful and that we will do this in a democratic and orderly process. Just prior to going to Councilmember Hare, I think we had originally talked that those who would like to have input or commentary during this section, we would go by districts. However, we will just allow the normal process to take place, which is those who would like to give comments or commentary to do so. Today is not a day that, that we welcome to be here today. And certainly I want to make it clear that this body is not equipped, capable, or resourced in a way to determine any innocence or guilt about anything that is being discussed. Today's letter of resignation, for me to support it, was basically, this was about the business of the people and being able to continue to do that. And I'm certainly not making any prejudiced opinion about what happened. As we look at this, we're not capable of doing it. And I'm personally not in a position to weigh in on that. We all heard whatever the audio that was released. We have our separate opinions, but Mr. Williams is entitled to his due process. But we still have the business of the citizens of District 2, which we both jointly represent. And so my support today was predicated on that. And with that, that will probably be my last comment during this phase. And I just want to allow the other council members to make comment as we would follow the normal discussion process. Right now, we see Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. As I stated upstairs, counsel, I had some serious delay in agreeing with the body on signing because I thought there was so much more involved in this issue. And we haven't been first given the full process of the issue as we normally do in these type of matters all across the country. But what I, in having my conversation, I'm going to ask the question back to the maker of the motion. Please just explain to me so I understand a little bit better and maybe even the citizens here tonight and those that are listening, where we are with the motion so I completely understand. And what perspective of this are we looking at as a body? Criminal, possibly, or are we talking only about ethics? So explain that so it can be explained properly to understand.
Tonight, the nine members of council have signed a request asking for Councilmember Williams' immediate resignation. I think as the mayor mentioned, we are not doing our own independent city council criminal investigation. My personal opinion, the audio sickened me, and I am asking Councilmember Williams to resign immediately strictly based on ethics and the appearance and what I heard on that, heard on that video. That's my point of view, but there's nine other members of council up here that could answer for themselves.
Thank you, sir. And Mayor, I'll wave until my second round.
Thank you. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. As a city council member, this seat belongs to the people that we represent. And we have been inundated with concerns from the citizens, not only in District 2, but in the city of Fayetteville at large. We are not responsible for deciding who has broken laws or in enforcing those laws. We are responsible for ethically governing the city of Fayetteville. And if any one of us makes a decision that violates- the City of Fayetteville, and if any one of us makes a decision that violates that ethic or violates the trust of the citizens of this city, we as a body have to make the strong decision that we are not okay with that. Mr. Williams, I am asking that you make a responsible choice and resign from the council effective immediately. I ask that the council do everything within their power, that we will be able to separate this council from the actions of Mr. Williams. If anyone else has involvement in this matter, I'm strongly urging that that person or those people would make a decision to stand down as well. This is not a time for us to attempt to assign guilt or innocence. And, Mr. Williams, I wish you no ill, but we have to do what is right by the citizens of this city, and what is right at this time is for us to move forward without this scandal looming over us. Final comment, Mr. Williams, according to the paper, your employment at Brian Honda, you took a voluntary leave of absence because of the look of this situation and how it could affect that business. I urge you to be very considerate of how the look of that situation affects the business of the City of Fayetteville. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Waddell. Councilmember Crisp?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and citizens of Fayetteville, my signature is on the letter calling for the resignation. We've got to go forward. We have a mountain of work facing us. That will be difficult if we go forth under a cloud, as we are under right now. There's some concern that the FBI is investigating this. We don't know that, but I'll tell you this, if they are, we won't get anything from them, nor from anybody else, even if we hire private investigators, because the only evidence we have is the tape that has been released, and the word of Mr. Jones, and the word of Councilman Williams. I am not in favor of spending one dollar of taxpayers' money to hire an investigative body to tell us what we already know. The tape is very damaging to the integrity of Mr. Williams. I think that's clear. The inference that this should go down, but the public should not be aware of it, is a clear ethical violation of the transparency upon which we've sworn in our duty to uphold. I signed the letter requiring and requesting Mr. Williams resign. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Crisp? Councilman Art?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. You know, this, this is not something that, that is easy or done in any kind of light fashion, and I want the public to understand that. You know, for this, this body to have to look at one of its peers and to make a request that they resign, that, that's tough, but it's the right thing to do. And I think it's the right thing to do because of what my fellow councilmembers have articulated. There's nothing more imperative for us as an elective body than for the public to have trust that we're operating in an ethical manner in all our dealings. There can be no question about how we do business, and, 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 Mr. Mayor, you rightfully, you've been calling for transparency, and, and we've got transparency. The tape was ultimate transparency, and, and, and I think we've got to call for more transparency. I welcome that on matters past, and matters present, and in matters in the future. So it's one of those things that, you know, you do this with a heavy heart, but it's the right thing to do. It's the right thing for the city. It's the right thing for our citizens. And so with that, Mr. Williams, not meaning you any will, ill will, I think it's prudent. I think it's honorable. I think it's the right thing for you to do, and that is to step down and allow somebody to represent your district. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen, and then Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, our city was founded in 1762, and I think if we go through the books, we've never had to deal with something like this, so we're all in uncharted territory here. And I will agree with my colleagues of Councilmember Art and Crisp and Councilwoman Waddell exactly what they said, and what I'm gonna add to that is, when I was elected four years ago, we came in as a pretty new council, and we worked tirelessly and vigorously to get Fayetteville on a better path, on getting us that people were wanting to come to Fayetteville and do business here. And I think we were moving in the right direction, and I think our reputation is at stake right now. People are not seeing us in our best light, where we've worked so hard and so tirelessly. And the one thing that I can say that all of us have learned in this job, this job is much, much bigger than any of us personally. As individuals, this is so much bigger, and we have so many people's futures in our hands, and we need to do the right thing. We have a cloud over us, and I'm asking for your resignation, so we can move forward in a path that we have been going, and to help our reputation and have people want to come live and recreate here in Fayetteville. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Councilmember Wright, and then Williams.
Mr. Mayor, this is probably one of the hardest decisions that I've labored over. I prayed last night about it, in the direction, and I had to actually try to understand the whole scope of what was happening here. We're not judging Councilman Williams in a criminal court tonight. This is unprecedented presidents for our council. We've never been here before, and as a body, we're trying to do what's right for our citizens and for the image of our city. I've always was taught that we must presume a man is innocent until proven guilty, and that he is due due process. And so what we're talking about here tonight is not a criminal matter, but an ethical matter. I listened to the tape several times, and it's just heavy on my heart as for, is the direction that the city has taken in the cloud that's over the city, because everybody wants to know what's going on, and everybody wants to go forward. It's unfortunate that this has taken place, and in the manner that it has taken place, but we have to move forward as a city, and the reputation of our city, our council, and going forward is, is paramount. And this is why I signed the letter, but this is not the end of the matter, and that's not up to us to decide. So we, as policymakers of the City Council, have to make hard choices like this from time to time, and everything else, we put in God's hands. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I have heard from many of my friends and people of the District Two, with a strong support and firm belief that I violated no law. I will not resign from the Fayetteville City Council. I ran for council to serve people who didn't always have a voice in the city government. I am going to try my best to make sure that they are heard. I am sorry for any mistakes I've made, but my intent was always to comply with all legal requirements. In many dealings with Prince Charles Holding and Mr. Jones, that is why I insist that any solutions be a formal proposal run through an attorney. I insist that any solutions to a formal proposal run through attorneys, and that it happened to be reviewed by the Fayetteville City Attorney when speaking with Mr. Jordan on the tape. I will do my best to assist the investigation, if there's any I've not heard. In the matter of the Ethics Committee or independent third party, I will not answer any questions at this time, and will refer them to my attorney, Mr. Chris Poppy. I will work hard to continue to be the kind of councilman that my constituents deserve and respect. I look forward to serving the people and the City of Fayetteville. We have a bright future, and I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. It's time for we go to Councilmember Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want the public to kind of understand the process. The City Council cannot make him resign. Now, nine members signed that letter, including the mayor. We don't have a recall process at this time. I think you'll see in the next month or so, the council move forward about asking the General Assembly to change the city charter to allow you, the voters, to have a recall of any of us up here in the future. So I want to make sure we understand that even though we're asking Councilmember Williams to resign, we can't make him resign, and now we've just been told that he will not resign. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dawkins. Have we, has everyone had an opportunity for their round? All right, council, at this time, we will close the discussion phase and ask for your votes, and this is to vote in favor of the deliverance of the letter that was previously discussed. Councilmember Hare? All right, Madam Clerk, that is nine to, of those who voted, Councilmember Williams abstain. All right. Yes, ma'am.
If I'm not mistaken, Mayor Colvin, when we, we went to training for ethics, we were, we were instructed that there are only particular reasons that you can abstain from a vote, and that should you abstain outside of those particular reasons, your vote is counted as a yes. Can we check to make sure that what type of situation this would be to determine what Councilmember Williams' vote should be recorded as?
Well, I think because there was no formal recusal, that it is counted in the affirmative. So it was unanimous in the past, even with the abstention. Madam Attorney, you a little more?
Mr. Williams was correct in that he cannot vote on a matter related to his own conduct, so the vote was as recorded.
Unanimous, okay. Okay, nine, nine oh, okay. All right. Thank you, council. Moving forward to item six point zero consent. Councilmember Wright?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda, but I want to pull item six point zero six for further discussion when it comes to West Senior Citizen Center, and ask the staff to brief us a little further on that, on particulars on the Senior Citizen Center.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. So was that a motion to approve item six point zero, with the exception of six point zero six, Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Okay. Was there a second on that motion? Councilmember Art, you had a, a second by Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Art, you had a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, when are we gonna amend the agenda for the item that needed to be added?
It should have been the approval of the agenda. Yeah, Madam, Madam Attorney, the item that you're referencing is the eight point zero one item that we hit?
Nine point, uh, recusal.
Okay. Madam Attorney, is that something that needed to happen now, or in the other items of business?
You can do it in the other items of business. It doesn't need to be in the form of a actual item, but just take it at that time.
Okay, all right. Good. All right, any further discussion on the motion, Councilman Dawkins?
Just six point oh one, this is not six point oh two?
This was the approval of the consent, with the exception of removing item six point zero six, if there was something?
I want to pull six point oh two because it's got ballpark materials in there, and I don't want Councilman Williams voting on that. I'll ask for his recusal.
It's, it's not a vote. It's, it's consent.
It's on the consent agenda. I want it pulled.
Okay. All right, so that'd be a separate item. Certainly have the right to do that for consent. So is there any other amendments to the consent items? So that is the, now was that a motion, Councilmember Dawkins, or you were just asking for that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Friendly amendment to the law.
Amendment to the motion. I accept that amendment.
Okay, so, so the motion on the floor, Madam Attorney? Motion on the floor was to approve the six point zero consent section, with the exception of item six point zero two and six point zero six. Is that correct? All right, any further discussion on, on the motion? All right, council, ask for your vote. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous, ten zero. All right, as it relates to item six point zero two, Councilmember Dawkins, that was your item. Madam Attorney?
Madam Attorney, I'm asking that Councilmember Williams recuse himself from this particular item number.
And in fact, given where we are, we could go ahead and ask for that recusal for all items related to Project Home Run.
Excellent, thank you. But that's my, is that, I guess that's a motion to you.
Yes, sir. So that is a motion, and for the general public, Councilmember Williams had asked to be recused for all items related to PCH and Operation Home Run. This is just a restatement of previous action. Is that correct?
I think the previous action was just for PCH, so this would add Project Home Run, which would also include any items related to the baseball stadium.
Okay, all right.
I'll second the motion.
All right, there's a second by Councilmember Art. So this is the Dawkins Art motion. There's a question on the floor during the discussion. Councilmember Wright?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, just have a question pertaining to the recusal of the park and the Prince Charles. After this recusal, do, do we have to come back every time on an item that we have to go through this motion every time, or this will be good after that, and every other agenda item is already known to be recusal? How does that work?
That would be correct, Councilmember Wright. If you'll recall the previous recusal just related to PCH, so we're adding this stadium to this motion tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All items related to Project Home Run.
All right, council, any, any other discussion on the motion for recusal? All right, you voted? Okay, all right, council, we'll look for your vote. Yeah, Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, I recuse myself from anything with PCH. Do we need to go back and I put a letter together saying I'm accusing myself of PCH and the baseball park?
Uh, not for me. I think that just the passage of this motion will include-
Not necessary, okay, thank you.
Okay, well, we good on that, Mr. McDonald, with the passage of this motion cover baseball?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You good? All right. All right, council, we'll look to you for votes. All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Those that are voting, with the exception of the recusal previously mentioned. All right, item six point zero six, Councilmember Wright?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to pull this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Ma'am?
I'm sorry. That was the vote for the recusal. Now you need the vote for six point zero two.
All right. All right, council, now we are voting on the item six point zero two. Need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve item six point oh two, award the ballpark materials testing and inspection service agreement as presented.
Second. That motion was by Councilmember Art, seconded by Councilmember Dawkins. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, council, we'll look to you for action. Madam Clerk, that also is unanimous, nine to zero. All right, item six point zero six, Councilmember Wright?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak with the staff concerning the land lease for construction of the West Senior Citizen- for construction of the West Senior Citizen Center, and I want to kind of, um, to the audience and to the listening audience to kind of break that down a little bit, let them know where we are. And, um, that's an exciting project, and, uh, just wanted the people to know what's going on with it.
Thank you, sir. Senior Center West is one of the key projects, I'm sorry, Christoph Bauer, Deputy City Manager. And, uh, Senior Center West is one of the key projects that's been funded by the bond, uh, project, bond program that was actually authorized by the community a couple of years ago. Uh, this is a senior center that we're looking at building on, uh, public land out on Lake Rim. Uh, we've been working with the Land Conservation Trust to get this land available. It's right there on the lake. It's a beautiful area, about, I think, twenty-five, thirty acres. Uh, we're in the process of going through schematic design and cost estimate, estimation at this point. So, we're taking a look at, you know, what is the preliminary design? What are the site layouts? Trying to make sure that what we move forward with to a more detailed level of design is within scope and cost for the project. So, that's what we're working right now on, with the hopes of completing that design within the next, uh, six months and beginning construction this year.
Okay. A lot of the se-, uh, seniors out there are asking the question, when will the project be completed? Do you have, uh, a date of completion on that? I know it's kind of further than I like, an estimation date of completion.
Uh, by the end of calendar year 2019.
End of calendar year 2019?
That's correct.
Okay, listening to all this, y'all heard that, don't ask me no more. Thank you, sir.
Leave it to Councilmember Wright for some humor, thank you. Alright, um. Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Alright, Councilmember Wright, any, look to you for action, sir?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, I move to allow the land lease for construction of the Western Senior Center.
Uh, that's a motion by Councilmember Wright, a second by, is Council, Councilmember Jensen? Alright, any discussion on the motion? Uh, is that votes or discussion?
I wanted, I wanted to make sure the public understands, what is, Mr. Bauer, is it a dollar for how many years? Thirty years? The lease?
The lease is just under thirty years, and yes, it is for a dollar.
A dollar.
Pretty good deal, huh?
Got it. I like that, I'd like to buy a lot of land.
We can extend it, uh, at the end of that period.
Thank you.
Mr. Bauer, can we say, good things come to those who wait?
Great things come, man.
Wait, broke the wagon down.
Alright, council, we have, uh, a motion and a second on the floor. Is there, uh, any further discussion on the motion? If not, look to you for action. Uh, council, Mayor Pro Temp, where is he? Alright, unanimous by those present, uh, with, uh, the exception of Councilmember Moon. Yeah, it's in, it's in affirmative, just making sure that the minutes reflected it. It was an absolute vote. Alright, um, item seven point zero is the public forum. This is the time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last longer than thirty minutes, and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you're here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under the public hearing, we ask that you reserve your comments until that public hearing. So, when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and your home address for the record. Then, when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, you have thirty seconds left to speak. When you see the red light come on, your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we are not able to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, ask for you, call the first speaker.
Yes, sir, we have nine speakers signed up for this evening. Of, excuse me, our first speaker is Ms. Dolores Poindexter. Ms. Dolores Poindexter. Not here. Uh, next speaker signed up is Dr. Connie Lightener.
Uh, Clerk, is that her, is that Ms. Poindexter? No? Okay. I saw someone, some movement, okay.
Uh, Dr. Connie Lightener. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello. My name is Constance Lightner. My address is seven nine five Asheville Drive, here in Fayetteville, two eight three, three, two eight three one one. Um, on behalf of Cumberland County, uh, the Cumberland County, um, Division of the United Way and their Board of Directors, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Colvin, and the Mayor Pro Temp, as well as the city council for giving us a small opportunity to speak about the most recent, um, needs assessment that was conducted here in Cumberland County. Um, as we know, Cumberland County raises funds so that they can support different social service, um, programs that'll help the community. And in order to make sure that they're supporting the causes that'll be the most impactful for our communities, roughly every five years, they do a needs assessment. I've been a statistician on this needs assessment since early two thousand. And, um, basically, we always put together a report, which will give the exhaustive results of a survey that's sent out to Cumberland County residents, asking them about some of the biggest issues in their community so that they can fund projects basically related to them. Um, over all of the different cycles that we've done for this needs assessment, the same, um, general items pop up, and we've given you guys a summary sheet. Um, crime, um, whether it's, um, affordable medical, dental, healthcare, a lot of the common issues. But, something that's important for us to see is when new trends pop up, to see if there are new things that we need to pay more attention to addressing. And basically, one of the items that did pop up, if you look at that sheet, looking at the survey that was done in twenty twelve versus the one that was done in twenty sixteen, um, a new issue that's popped up in the top ten, because they always want to make sure those top ten are funded, in addition to anything else, was abuse, neglect, and assault of children. And it was pretty interesting that that actually popped up, because it's basically mimicking what we're seeing in the news with different child trafficking issues. But, I basically invite you guys to go to Cumberland County, um, the United Way of Cumberland County's website, or speak with their Community Impact Director, Krista Moore Williams, and actually see the entire report, because there's a lot of interesting, um, results in there that could actually help us best serve the community residents. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. And, and so basically, this is a survey, so this is, this reflects people's opinion about what the community entails, right?
Exactly. From education to crime, uh, most of the major issues and the social service type issues, we basically, and if you go to the website, they can give you the full report, we ask them pages long of different questions in order to get their insight on it, because we want to make sure that they're funded, that we are funding the programs to basically help them. If those are issues in their community that are plaguing their community, we want to help them. We want to make sure that we're, we're addressing those as best as we can.
Thank you. This is, this is great information, so, thank you. Uh, council, any further questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Amanda Christensen.
Hello?
Hello, good evening. My name's Amanda Christensen. I live at two four four three Dartmouth Drive, um, here in Fayetteville, two eight three oh four. Um, I'm here with a friend, Scott Cameron, and, uh, Scott and I are among a group of neighbors that have established Friendship Community Gardens, a five oh one C three nonprofit, with the important and worthwhile mission of building relationships among neighbor, uh, neighbors with very diverse backgrounds and abilities through gardening. We've recently purchased four fallow lots in the Savoy Heights neighborhood, um, with two more that should be closing in a couple of weeks. Um, our mission is two-pronged, one, to serve the residents and volunteers of Friendship House Fayetteville, um, and two, to build relationships and provide resources to our neighbors in Savoy Heights. Half of our footprint will be, uh, will provide open gardening space for the residents of Friendship House Fayetteville and volunteers to grow organic vegetables for their own tables, um, and potentially use surplus vegetables, um, for a farmer's market where residents can practice life skills. The second half of our effort, and perhaps the most important mission, will be, um, put towards building and maintain, maintaining large areas of raised bed garden plots for families and friends of Savoy Heights to utilize for growing fresh nutritious vegetables. There could be no dispute that Savoy Heights in the Branson Street area is one of several neighborhoods in our city that gets little to no attention. We would like to be another of a few working groups in the area building positive, healthy relationships and programs for our very deserving, deserving neighbors. For the very small yearly rental fee of twenty-five dollars, we want to offer five by ten raised bed gardens, uh, full of fertilized soil and water for our neighbors to help supplement their own tables with fresh produce. We hope to also offer help with seeds and seedlings, tools, and other education if it's invited. Um, Friendship Community Garden will be a source of community pride, a place of exercise and recreation for the elderly, a learning experience, uh, for the youth, and a source of nutritious homegrown vegetables that just may help some families through another month. But, we also need a little bit of help. The biggest hurdle we are currently challenged with right now is debris pickup. Since our lots are without homes, they've, we've been told that we don't pay the appropriate taxes that cover trash services, um, including bulk yard pickup. We are currently putting in a lot of sweat equity hours and volun, with volunteer manpower, um, as we are raising funds to move forward with the building and installing of our gardens. We humbly ask the city of Fayetteville to partner with Friendship Community Gardens by allowing for the collection of our de- debris created during our clearing, as well as excusing, excusing any overage charges, um, as we prepare, prepare, prepare for grading and eventual planting. We welcome the opportunity for a site visit with someone from the city to discuss easy ways that the city of Fayetteville can help support its residents. Thank you for your time here tonight and for your consideration, and we welcome each of you guys to be a part of the garden.
Thank you. Thank you for your great work.
Our next speaker is Ms. Pamela Carter.
You guys had a question for her? Okay. Uh, Councilmember Williams?
Amanda, could you come back to the forum? Um, Amanda project is something that's, is very much needed in the community. Um, she's working on it in Savoy Heights, and they're going over there and they're buying lots, and they're actually taking those lots that are overgrown and they mowing them, digging them up and putting vegetation in there, and they giving the land to the next door neighbor for them to get vegetables and things from. And, uh, she came to me, she spoke to me, and I thought very much it was a, a worthy cause. And all she's asked for at this time is us to pick up the debris of what they create on the curb at this time, and, uh, also some assistance down the road. But, I think us as a city, and with a waste management group, we definitely can go out there and remove the debris off the land that's put side of the road.
Uh, certainly, I, I don't see why, uh, that would be any different than sanitation pickup. So, you having problems with your bulk items being removed?
Well, um, I know if you leave your stuff out on the side, eventually, they'll come in, they'll pick it up with the big, the big crane. So, I called down, you know, knowing that I didn't want to create, we didn't want to create an eyesore for the neighbors, um, and that if you call and make an appointment, it might happen a little quicker. And, um, very kind lady, but we were told that our, our property is, doesn't have a home, uh, our lots don't have homes on them, so we don't pay the appropriate taxes that cover those services. Um, and I had already looked on the website, and
Okay.
the amount that we are creating, it would be like three hundred and fifty dollars a truckload anyway. And, we are raising fun, are currently, our land is fully funded by private sources. We've been able to raise the funds to buy the, the lot so far. And we're currently raising funds through talking to civic groups and churches, and also GoFundMe to try to drill a well and, you know, provide income for the initial build. So, we do not have the services, the, the funds to pay three fifty, but we don't even qualify for the services anyway.
Well, I have a question, Mr. Manager. So, if, uh, someone dumps a couch beside the road on a random street, it doesn't have an address necessarily, uh, we call those in all the time through Fayette Fix It. How is it that that happens without, uh, having a solid waste fee assessed to whatever lot she's discussing?
Well, um, the case of the couch is called illegal dumping, and for community beautification will pick that up. I was unaware that there was, this was an issue until tonight. Um, some of staff may have been, but I'm sure we'll, should be able to, um, discuss the matter, um, further with them and see if we can't find some solution.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Our, our, the reason why we came was, one, just to give you guys information and let you know what we're doing. Mr. Williams was kind enough to, to meet with us. But, two, you know, um, we, we are creating a lot of debris, you know, with clearing the lot, so it, we didn't want it to become an issue.
Alright, we appreciate what you're doing. Thank you. Any other questions for, uh, Councilmember Chris?
Mr. Chris, i- if you can make this happen, we'll plant whatever you want.
Alright. Alright, so, council, we know that, uh, that it was an exception with one, one or two of these things. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, typically, during the public comment section, we, we allow them to comment, and we, we don't, we don't usually allow the questions, so, uh, but this was good information. Uh, Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Pamela Carter.
Hello. My name, evening. My name's Pamela Waddell Carter. I live at five oh five Link Street in the B Street neighborhood, which is in District Two. I'm a homeowner and taxpayer. I chair the B Street Community Watch. I'm a member of the B Street Coalition, and I'm a member of the B Street Walking Crew. I didn't write a prepared statement like I should have, because I held out hope when I saw the news that the council and mayor had unanimously decided to ask Mr. Williams to step down. And I thought surely he'll do the right thing now. And yet, here we find ourselves. Uh, my neighborhood is in the middle of a revitalization. Uh, I think all y'all are aware of that on the council. You voted to give us, um, city money, and we appreciate that. It's really helping, it's changing our neighborhood right before our eyes, and we thank you. Just based on everything that I've been seeing in the news concerning, uh, Mr. Williams, I just believe it's in the best interest of my neighborhood and District Two and all of Fayetteville for you to, to step down. Uh, this is, the, the Ballpark Hotel deal, which is intermingled, is the biggest economic event to happen to downtown, which is just a few blocks from my neighborhood. And now, we don't have a voice in that. We have no advocate, no voice. This is disheartening, it's disappointing. I want you to do the right thing, Mr. Williams. You know, before the election, we saw you a couple of times. I saw your people that were running for District Two, I saw them way more. I saw Linda Miller, she would come down to our walking crew events and bring us water on a daily basis, she did that. I saw, um, Dan Colleton, he was down there all the time, uh, you know, helping us, asking, what can we do to help you? We're, we're in this, you know? And they were there, they're still there. I see Ms. Miller, I see, uh, even my former fantastic representative, City Councilman Kirk Deviere, uh, who was a hands-on, you know, do anything we needed him to do, advocate, strong, fantastic advocate for us. Uh, I see him, I saw him before he was elected, you know, while he was District Two Representative, and even now, he's still with us. I have yet to see you, sir. I have yet, since election, seen you or heard from you. And you know you get a daily text from me asking you to come walk with us. That's been disappointing. But, based on everything I've seen, I heard the audio, uh, based on what these folks hear tonight, based on, uh, what Ms. Councilwoman Waddell has said that she's heard from District Two, uh, constituents, and from the city of Fayetteville residents, do the right thing, this is serious. This is important for our city. I don't wish any ill will either.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
Thank you.
Alright, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Gary Walker. Mr. Gary Walker.
Welcome, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, sir. My name is Gary Walker. I live at fifty-five oh five Longwood Drive here in Fayetteville. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, I would like to thank you for giving me just a few moments to speak to you about a very important, uh, medical, uh, event that is coming here to Fayetteville. Um, last month, Ms., uh, the president of Impact Your Health Fayetteville, Ms. Joan Daniels appeared before you to inform you of this event that's taking place on the thirteenth and the fifteenth of, uh, April, this Friday and the following Sunday, this weekend. Um, this event will bring free medical, dental, and vision care to individuals in the Fayetteville Cumberland County area at no cost on a first come, first served basis. Uh, we want to invite the, the, you the mayor, Mayor Pro Temp? We want to invite the, you the mayor, Mayor Protem, and the entire council to come down, meet your constituents there, and to just give us a vote of confidence for the free care that we are providing. We are linking with a group that's been in existence since 2005, the Adventist Medical Evangelism Network out of California. They function nationally and internationally. If you want to know more about them, you can find out information about them on freeamenfreeclinik.org. That's amenfreeclinik.org, and you'll see our event listed there. Along with vision, dental, and regular medical care, we're also going to offer screenings for diabetes and cholesterol. There will be cancer education and awareness, as well as there's going to be spiritual counseling for individuals that may need those types of services. Again, we want to invite you to come out. We'll be there on both days. I heard a lot of good things going on this weekend, and a lot of it was on that Saturday. So if you need something on Friday to do, and something on Sunday to do, come out and participate with us. Last month, you were provided with a flyer that had this information. I have some more if you need a reminder or something to hold on to. Otherwise, we thank you very much for your time.
Can you restate the location and the time?
The location I didn't say. It is at the, you had to ask me. Hold on a second. It's at the Crown Coliseum Arena, right on 301. Crown Coliseum Arena, right in where the marquee is on 301, it's in that building on, on Friday and on Sunday.
It's Friday and Sunday, not Saturday.
That is correct. Saturday, I will share with you, Saturday, we're having a multicultural worship service. I don't have the address right here with me. If you're interested, we can get that information to you, but the event itself will take place on Friday and on Sunday.
Thanks a lot. Free health services, health-related services to the community.
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Jerry Reinal.
Mr. Reinal, we hadn't seen you in a while up here.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I've been giving you all a break to sort of let you get settled into your new chairs and things like that.
Yes, the break is over, right? All right. How you doing? Can you state your name and your address?
Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the Fayetteville City Council, good evening. My name is Jerry Reinal, 516 Deer Path Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Right on. We must continue electing our judges and must stop efforts of the North Carolina General Assembly, the governor, and others in Raleigh to change our judicial election process. The people must elect our judges and not the deal-making politicians making decisions in formerly smoke-filled back rooms in Raleigh. The 1868 post-Civil War North Carolina Constitution gave citizens the right to elect our judges. We don't want to return to a dark period in our history when judges were appointed in a matter like that being proposed in Raleigh. We appreciate your bipartisan leadership on the resolution supporting the rights of citizens to continue electing our judges. Early voting for the May 8 primary election begins on Thursday, April 19. Vote, and don't be among the 95% who will sit out the election and disappoint those who made it possible for you to elect our leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reinal.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Evelyn Wheatley.
Hello, Ms. Wheatley.
Hi. My name is Evelyn Wheatley. I live at 3008 Hickory Hill Senior Citizen Department. And I was here about a week or two ago, and I know you get a lot of messages from me. But anyways, they stopped our bus. We have a very steep hill going up the hill to the bus where they put it now. They never said anything to us about it. They never notified us. We have 80 senior citizens, and I'm the youngest one and the one best in health, and I have a hard time getting up the hill. Now, you said last time we had a meeting, the-
Transit?
Yeah. The traffic man was here, and you told him to get on it. And he, I don't know where he got on of that, but he didn't get it on here.
He must didn't if you're standing back here.
And I'm gonna keep coming back until we get the bus.
Thank you for that.
Okay? I mean, all of us have older parents, grandmothers, grandfathers, friends, whatever. And I've invited Ms. Wendell and her husband and her friend to come out and walk the hill. If any of y'all would like to come out and walk this hill, you're welcome to it. But I guarantee you, you will be out of breath by the time you get to the top of the hill. Okay? Now, why does it take a vote of all of y'all to do the right thing? We all agreed it's the right thing to put the bus back, right? Why does it take a vote? That's what I've been told. It takes a vote from this committee to put that bus down, where all that man has to do is pick, it's not gonna cost him no more. In fact, it's costing him by not coming down there, because-
Hold on one second, Ms. Wheatley. Let me, Mr. Manager, why does it take a vote to send that bus back down?
It didn't take a vote for, to remove it, but it was my direction after you spoke the last time that we would take care of this. So I apologize that it hasn't been, but we will get taken care of soon.
Real soon.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wheatley?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wheatley, if it's not, please come back.
Oh, I will.
All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Manager.
She wanted here tomorrow.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Amy Samperton. Ms. Amy Samperton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Amy Samperton. I reside at 122 Pennlark Place in District Two, and I'm here to implore, implore Mr. Williams to resign immediately. I find myself, I find it incredulous that you show such little regard for your fellow council members, that you do not take their suggestion that you resign. How in the world can you do that and then go and state that you're here to serve your district? You obviously are not here to serve your district. You certainly do not represent me or my household. I wish I had taken time earlier, like Ms. Carter said, to make a proper presentation, but I too thought you would do the right thing without additional prodding. Your audacious display of disrespect for the city of Fayetteville astonishes me. You should be personally embarrassed. I'm embarrassed for you. You need to stop rationalizing your poor decisions and your low ethical standards. You need to show respect for the constituents of District Two, your fellow council members, and yourself, and step down immediately. Thank you.
Mayor, our final speaker for this evening is Mr. Jordan Jones.
Please state your name and address, sir.
Jordan Jones, Prince Charles Holdings LLC, 450 Hay Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Earlier this evening, Councilmember Williams released a statement from his council regarding our interactions since our meeting on December 21st. I was surprised and disappointed to receive this statement.
Mr. Jones, hold one second. Madam Clerk, was, was Mr. Jones on the list as required?
Was, Mayor, he was added to the list after the meeting began.
Well, all right. So, so it is, it is, it is a discretion of the chair. Just like any position on, on any item of interest like we do with PWC, I will afford Mr. Jones to speak within the parameters of his three minutes. And so please continue, sir, and then if there are any counter speaks. But please, sir, because of the fact that the nature of the litigation, please, you know, don't, don't have the body in, in the litigation, okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this evening, Councilmember Williams released a statement from his council regarding our interactions since December 21st. I was surprised and disappointed to receive this statement. In it, he references a text message on February the 12th, and then a phone call on February the 13th, made from a cell phone number by me to him. This cell phone number identified by Councilmember, Councilmember Williams was 919-985-7582. This is not my personal cell phone number. This is that of the FBI. This text message and other text messages and calls I made to Councilmember Williams were under the sole authorization and supervision of the FBI. All text messages and calls were monitored and recorded by the FBI. I had been asked by the FBI to not reveal this information. However, given tonight's statement from Councilmember Williams, I must reveal this information to now clear my name and that of my organization. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have no final speakers.
All right. It's time we will move beyond the public forum and to the public hearing. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearings must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name, address, before 7:00 PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes unless, by, unless, three minutes each unless by a previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson, many may use the entire 15 minutes. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, you have 30 seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring.
Wow.
This time, we have a member of the staff present. Ms. Cheryl.
Cheryl Spivey, Chief Financial Officer, City of Fayetteville. I have a presentation, if I can get it loaded. The, the purpose of the, of the public hearing tonight is to talk, talk about the limited obligation bonds. City Council on March 26 called for this public hearing for limited obligation bonds to fund the baseball stadium and the parking deck. The limited obligation bonds will be issued in an amount not to exceed $52 million. The security on the bonds will be a deed of trust granting a lien on the baseball stadium. The notice of public hearing was published in the Fayetteville Observer on March 30. After the public hearing, the, there are some findings that are required by the LGC for this financing that I will, that I will read through after the public hearings held.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Spivey. Madam Clerk, with that, I will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Mayor, we have no speakers for this item.
No speakers. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do we have any questions for Ms. Spivey? Ms. Spivey?
Great.
All right. Counsel, we look to you for action regarding item 8.01, which is the issuance of the limited obligation bonds to finance Project Home Run and related projects.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we vote to issue the bonds to authorize the issue of the limited obligation bonds to finance the baseball stadium and the park deck, and the resolution making certain findings and requests the local government commission to approve the financing.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion, Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, my understanding, they had approved 20 years, and I think we're going to, this is going to be a 30-year bond?
No, the, the, the bonds will be 20 years, level principal, and, which is the, the most conservative way to issue these bonds.
Okay, so all $52 million is going to be paid off in 20 years?
That's correct.
Okay. Wow. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any additional questions or discussion on the motion on the Wright-Hare motion? If not, counsel, look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous, nine to zero, with the exception of the recusal, Mr. Williams. Thank you, Ms. Spivey. Item 9.01, presentation of committee recommendations for commission appointments, for boards and appointments.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman.
Councilmembers, I'll make this very brief. On the 3rd of April, 2018, the appointments committee again met in session to attempt to fill some of the vacant seats in some of our boards and commission. As a result of that meeting, we make the following recommended appointments to you. We make the following recommendations for appointments to you. For the Fayetteville Advisory Committee on Transit, Mr. Michael Worrell. For the Fayetteville Cumberland Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Ms. Crystal For the Fayetteville City Zoning Commission, Dr. Bryant Edwards. For the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission, Mr. Ramnik Kapapas. And for the Personnel Review Board, we do recommend the Reverend Dorothy McNeil. Those are our recommendations, sir, and if a motion is in order, I move that the council approve those recommended appointments.
I second.
Thank you, Councilmember Waddell, for the second. Apologize, ma'am. Apologize, Mayor Protem was asking about a procedural matter. So Councilmember Chris, that was a motion, that was a second, ma'am? All right. All right. Any discussion, I see, Councilmember Hare?
Yeah, just, just wanted to ask a question, maybe for the public or those that sat on some of our boards. I know that we had a, a member, I guess you all probably discussed it at your meeting, where a term wasn't fulfilled. Well, we know that, we know the area that it was in. If you would, please explain exactly how that works. How many meetings, or can a person miss? I mean, what's the, the timeframe of meetings so they're not removed? I was talking to, to, well, whoever, I was talking to Mrs. McDonald, but- Yes, sir. Councilman Hare. The requirement, I believe, is that they attend 70% of the meetings. When they fall below that, then we begin to take a look at whether or not they're serious about serving on that particular board and commission. We have had in the past some people that have missed 50% of the meetings, and some even greater than that. Now, we did have a vacancy that occurred on one of these because the lady moved outside of the city of Fayetteville. And that was either the FAS Committee or Parks and Rec. I don't remember, Jane is not here. But there is a requirement in our regulations that, in our ordinances, that they be compelled to attend 70% of the meetings unless they have a legitimate reason for not attending. For example, hospitalization, illness in the family, those kinds of things, we accept those as normal activity. But when they're without excused absentee, then we invoke the rule of the ordinance, and we, we have Jane send him a letter, Mrs. Starling, that is, send him a letter, which they have every perfect right to respond to as to why they ought not be removed. And, and then we go about the business of removing them and re-advertising the positions if necessary. In many instances, we already have applications on file, because the applications that are filed are good for one year. So we don't often have to advertise unless we don't get anyone that's volunteering to serve on a particular committee, and then we go out and re-advertise that one, sir. I hope that answers your question. Yes, sir, and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Chris. Any, any further discussion on the Chris Waddell motion? All right, counsel, look to you for action. All right, council, look to you for action. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous, ten to zero. All right, item 9.02, Mayor Protem moan.
Yes, this was the item we added at the beginning of our meeting to reaffirm council's previous votes regarding Project Home Run, taken after December 4, 2017, and before Councilmember Williams requested recusal. So I'm gonna make a motion, and I'm gonna read the one motion to approve. I will read the five items that we are going to approve, vote to approve at the same time. I make a motion that we approve and reaffirm our previous votes. Letter A was December 11, 2017. It was Prince Charles Holdings, PCH Downtown Development Agreement, Third Amendment, Garage Contract, Construction Project Ordinance 2018 and 32. Letter B, the vote we took on 22 January, 2018, Stadium Construction Manager at Risk, Contract with Barton Mallow, Second Amendment. Letter C, March 7, 2018, Stadium Construction Manager at Risk, Contract with Barton Mallow, Third Amendment. March 7, 2018, Prince Charles Holding, Parking Lease, to set public hearing for March 19, 2018. And Letter E, March 19, 2018, Stadium Construction Manager at Risk, Contract with Barton Mallow, Fourth Amendment, and Capital Project Ordinance Amendment 2018-50.
Thank you, Mayor Protem moan. That was a motion.
Second.
Motion to reaffirm the votes we previously took on those five items.
Got you. That was second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, look to you for action. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Voting, nine to zero. All right, item 9.03, was that an addition, it was an add-on, right?
It was the...
Okay, so you took care of it, all right. Entertainer motion to...
902 became 903.
Hey, sir.
Evening, sir.
Got you, all right. All right, item 10.01.
Yes, so this is the item, I believe, that you're at on the agenda for the DDA Amendment Four, right? Okay, thank you. Christoph Bauer, Deputy City Manager. What this is, is that in the previous DDA, there was an obligation for a potential gap payment should the private property investments not reach the taxable value that was guaranteed in the contract. At that time, that was executed, the only asset that was owned by our partners was the Prince Charles Hotel. So that hotel was identified as the asset which secured that obligation. As they went through to finance that, having that one asset be the security for the entire deal was a little heavy. And now, they're actually in the process of owning additional assets. So what this does is it actually segregates that gap contribution to three different projects, the Festival Park Plaza, the Prince Charles Hotel, and the garage, and secures the gap payment for each based on those properties themselves. And there's actually a document attached that is recorded against those properties and will follow. So it provides the city additional security on that gap payment coming forward. The other piece of this is an assignment, as they move forward and purchase both the Festival Park Plaza and the Festival Park Plaza Development Lot, the entities which will purchase that, they've actually created little LLCs to do that, so they have an assignment of their current option, which they've purchased, to those new entities so they can close on those transactions later this week. So that's just before you deny.
So I had a question for you now. I heard you say that there were new LLCs formed. Does all of this cross collateralize, so that we're not playing, finding the asset?
Yes, yes. And actually, what we're doing is, through this amendment, we're attaching those assets to secure the gap payment.
All entities are responsible for guaranteeing this transaction?
Each piece is responsible for the piece that's assigned to it. So Festival Park Plaza has an obligation to have a taxable value in the area of $4.5 million. That asset is the security for that gap payment.
Got you. All right, thank you. Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bauer, the parking garage, you mentioned that, all right. We just committed $14.8 million of our money, the taxpayer money, to pay for that parking garage. So now, how are they allowed to be able to attach to that parking garage when it's our parking garage? I know we're gonna sign an agreement with them, that, I think they're gonna build it, and then they're gonna lease spaces, but it's still our parking garage.
Absolutely true. They own the land. They purchased the land from us as part of the previous transaction. So what we're doing is we're recording this obligation against that land...
Underneath the parking garage.
That's correct. And against the two buildings that are being constructed on top of the parking garage. So this allows us to attach those assets as they, the current asset that's there now, and the assets that will be created moving forward.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dawkins. Any further questions for Deputy City Manager Bauer? All right, council, look to you for action. Or a motion? Councilman Chris?
I move to approve, excuse me, I move to approve item 9.03, Prince Charles Holding Downtown Development Agreement for the Fourth Amendment on the Property Purchase Option Assignment.
Second.
Is there a motion by Councilmember Chris, second by Councilmember Wright? Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous, nine to zero. We have the traffic review, that's just administrative.
That's administrative.
All right, council, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Meeting adjourned.